Yes.
We go. Got it. Everybody press got it. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and start. Good evening and thank you for being here. The League of Women Voters of the Charleston area is sponsoring this virtual candidate forum for North Charleston City Council District Three, District Three. Shayna Howell from the Charleston Area League of Women Voters Communications Team is our Zoom host for tonight's forum. There she is. For this forum, only the candidates and the league volunteers are on Zoom. Interested voters can view the forum live on YouTube, and the recording will be posted to the league's website after it's completed. I'm Heidi Hupp, the Director of Candidate Forums for the Charleston Area League of Women Voters, and your moderator for this North Charleston City Council District Three Candidate Forum. You will, just a reminder, you will have 60 seconds for opening and closing statements, and 90 seconds to answer each question. Katie Owens, a league member, is our timekeeper tonight. There she is, Katie. As each candidate is speaking, Katie will hold up a sign when you have 30 seconds remaining, and then a stop sign when you should stop speaking. Please keep an eye on her, so I don't have to interrupt you if you go over your time. A candidate forum is not a debate. It is an opportunity to share your platform throughout the community. Candidates, please make sure you do not have campaign literature on your screen. I don't see any. The sponsor of this event is nonpartisan, and this is a nonpartisan event. On November 7th, 2023, North Charleston District Three voters will choose a new city council member to represent them. Only voters in North Charleston District Three will be able to vote in this election. However, the city of North Charleston is also having elections for the other nine district council members and the mayor on November 7th. I encourage voters to visit the League of Women Voters 411.org website to view information on those candidates and any other elections that may affect you. Keep checking back on vote411.org as candidate information is added throughout the election season. And for these candidates, if you have not responded to our vote411.org organizer, if she's contacted you yet, please, please do so. Answer those questions. It's really helpful to voters. Okay, these are the North Charleston District Three candidates who are in attendance tonight in alphabetical order. Lou Baker, if you wouldn't mind raising your hand. I mean, your name's on the screen, but raise your hand. Thank you. Renee Jones. Sandino Moses. Monica Mummy. Maurice Ray, or Mo Ray, and Chuck Stahl. There's Mr. Stahl. There you go. The seventh candidate, Curtis Clark, did not respond to requests to participate. The forum format. Candidates will respond to questions in rotating alphabetical order by last name. For example, for the candidate opening statement, it will be Lou Baker first, followed by Renee Jones, and so on. We will proceed in rotating order through the questions and closing statements. So for the next, for the first question, then it would be Renee Jones first, and then so on. We'll alternate that way. No questions will be asked by the moderator that are directed at only one candidate or are of a personal nature. We've been through this a couple of times, but each candidate will have 60 seconds to make an opening and closing statement. Candidates will have 90 seconds to respond to questions. A candidate may take an additional 60 seconds for rebuttal after all of the other candidates have responded to a question. A rebuttal is an opposing argument or a contradiction to what an opposing candidate has said. If you wish to make a rebuttal, signal us by raising your hand. And I will try to remember to ask after each question if anyone has a rebuttal. A candidate is allowed one rebuttal per candidate question. Excuse me. We ask the candidates to use closing statements to summarize the issues they have already discussed and their vision for the position they seek. All right, are there any questions before we start with the opening statements? No? Okay, we'll start with opening statements, starting with Mr. Baker, and you have 60 seconds.
Good evening. My name's Lou Baker. I'm a veteran of the submarine service. I've lived in District Three since 1989, 34 years. I've served since 2001 in two different civic associations, present in both. One was Northwood Estates, and currently in Deer Park. I've been present for seven years. My top three priorities when it comes to the community is infrastructure, livability, and safety.
Go ahead.
To accommodate the growth we're seeing significantly, the livability would be, you know, that would be insured by, good livability be insured by the use of the comprehensive plan that was just finished in June of 2020. And any change that would come up would be completely researched and ensure livability is not sacrificed. For safety's concern, work with the police department, and I welcome the Community Resource Officer Program and the new non-invasive camera surveillance program.
Okay, Mr. Baker, your time is up.
Yes.
All right, sorry about that. Hang on just a second. Shayna, if, could you mute yourself?
I cannot. Otherwise, the recording will not hold. I'm trying to quiet background noise.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I apologize. I forgot the recording wouldn't hold. All right. Ms. Jones, are you ready?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I do want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. My name is Renee Jones. I've been a active member. I've served, I've served the community for the past 20 years. For no director. I've served over 10,000 families. My platform is just safety, safety on the roads, and also, of course, keeping neighborhood clean. I feel that Ms. Jamison, she did a wonderful job while she was in seat, and my, my thing is to continue that. Thank you.
All right, I forgot to unmute myself. Thank you. Mr. Moses, are you ready? Oh, unmute yourself. Katie, don't start the time until someone unmutes themselves. Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to thank Heidi, Shani, and Katie for inviting me to this most needed forum tonight. Again, my name is Sandino Moses, and I've lived in Charleston for the last, lived in North Charleston for the last 10 years. I'm a graduate of the Jim Clyburn Fellowship Program. I'm a graduate of Elizabeth Warren Boot Camp, PCCC Progressive Candidate Training Committee. I currently serve on the Board of Trustees with Housing, with Father to Father, and I'm a former chairman of the Charleston County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And really, what my, what I want to stand on right now is new ideas for a new North Charleston. The community is excited. I'm excited, and we are ready to move forward to win this, to win this election. But this is the time, exciting time where we're gonna possibly, we're gonna have a new mayor, right? So the time is now, and remember, new ideas for a new North Charleston.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. Ms. Mummy, are you ready?
I am. Hello. My name is Monica Mummy. I have been a resident of Northwoods Estates for about 30 years. I am a homeowner here. I have gotten all of my children out of the house and have had some more time in the last couple of years to get involved in city politics. I have been to most of the city council meetings over the last two years, brought the concerns of my community through our Civic League, and have been very disappointed in some of the responses I've gotten. My platform really is, I firmly believe we need to have equity by district. We need to have transparency in our funding, and we need to have the proper infrastructure in place to maintain quality of life and property values. The city has spent a whole lot of money in very certain areas of the city and left some districts without proper funding for infrastructure. And this is creating poverty zones in what has always been a middle-class, safe community. We picked this place to live because the neighborhood was built in the 50s and 60s. It was predominantly retirees. It was a very quiet community, and the property values have held firm for decades. And unfortunately, we're being-
Your time is up.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Ray. Yeah, unmute yourself. Yep, yeah, okay, there you go.
My apologies. Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for the opportunity. My name is Maurice Ray, and I'm gonna keep this simple. I'm a 14-year vet. I'm a combat vet. I am born and raised in the city of North Charleston, and I believe it's a new day with more Ray. The reason I can say that, because I stand on these principles. I am here to serve, impact, and improve our community. I believe that I am the voice, I am the face, and I am the right man for the job to get all the current work done. And I say that emphatically, I say that incitely, because my track record, I've owned a business inside North Charleston for over eight years. I've spearheaded mentorship programs, back-to-school programs, as well as Stop the Violence rallies. Again, my name is Maurice Ray, and it's a new day with more Ray.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. Stahl.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. My name is Chuck Stahl. Native of North Charleston all my life. I have over 35 years' experience in public works and facility engineering. I retired from Charleston County Public Works in 2013, and I've been president of Northwood Village Homeowners Association for the last 15 years. And as such, along with the Board of Directors, we've been fighting for 15 years to get drainage improvements along our property. This costs us like over $23,000. We've been fighting crime in our community, and we ended up installing 16 cameras with a license plate reader, and we put 99% of the crime out of our community. And we've also been fighting for eight years for sidewalks on Crossroads Drive to protect our kids walking on, going back and forth to the bus stops. And the good thing about it, the good news is, after eight years working with the city and also putting pressure on the city council, we're gonna have the sidewalks probably in the next two months. So I look forward to hearing the other candidates on their issues for our district.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, let's proceed to the first question. In this question, I'm gonna give you a little more opportunity to be more, more specific about the strengths you bring to the table that will make you an asset to the North Charleston City Council. And let's start with Ms. Jones this time.
All right, so the strength that I, that I will bring is a more, being a more aggressive leader for the new generation, the younger generation. Also, I've seen changes in the community. I, like, years ago, the violence was like at 100%, and I've seen a decline in the violence. But my main concern is this road safety. It was a couple of years ago when the deputy got killed on the road, and I just think that was a sort, so much of a sad thing and something that could have been avoided. So that, like pedestrians, people who walk to the McDonald's or walk to the cookout or whatever, like, I want the roads to be more safe for them, because there's a lot of things that is happening on the road that is going on within the community, the speeding. So like, my main concern is just really keeping everyone safe all around, across the board.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Moses. Oh, unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Could you repeat the question again, ma'am?
Yes. What strengths do you bring to the table that will make you an asset to the North Charleston City Council?
Okay, thank you. First thing first, I'm, I've been trained for this, for this position that I'm gonna win. Again, I graduated from the Jim Clyburn Fellowship Program, where we learned budgeting, where we learned fundraising, where we learned how to engage the community and take, take my, and take your foot forward to be a leader in the community. I also worked at A.C. Cochrane Elementary for, for two years. That's a main hub, school is in the main hub of our district. I've worked there two years with kids with autism, right? So while in that capacity, I've met so many different parents in District Three. I've met a lot of different people. Also, I've been a chair, the former chairman of the Charleston County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, where we manage, our yearly budget was $2.5 million. While in that capacity, I really got to know a lot of our local elected officials, right? And also, I'm relentless. In the middle of the pandemic, I was the only candidate here in District Three that administered food giveaways at Northwood Baptist Church, that administered vaccination events in District Three. So, so I've been here a long time. I love the people in our community, and I'm a fighter, and I'm a fighter, and I don't take no for answer. And I'm gonna say one more thing. When I win, I am going to amplify the voices of District Three.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Mummy.
I am a registered nurse by training and have been a nurse for over 40 years. I've been a patient advocate in multiple different situations and over a long period of time. So I know how to advocate. I have been in charge of multiple committees and chaired them at the Medical University, where I have retired about two years ago, and I now work at Trident. I am a firm believer in putting the facts on the table and looking at them clearly, and then making determinations as to what is the best way to move forward. Unfortunately, there's a lot of lack of transparency in the system currently in place in the city of North Charleston. It's hard to get a straight answer on financing. It's hard to get a straight answer on how districts are chosen for special projects. I really think we need to do a thorough evaluation and review of the budget and how that money has been spent, both city, county, state, and federal budget. I don't believe it's been spread out fairly and equally among districts, and I believe that needs to be thoroughly reviewed. I have asked for Freedom of Information Act information on how monies have been spent and have been told by the head of the Finance Committee in the mayor's office that we don't keep a budget that way. This is the third-largest city in the state of South Carolina, and we are currently working under a good old boy system that is not promoting equity and fairness in the expenditure. If you look at where funds are spent, they are not clearly and equally distributed between, between districts, and that needs to be thoroughly reviewed, because infrastructure not being placed in all districts is creating poverty zones in some of those districts that have never been poverty zones before. You can't main-
I'm sorry, Ms. Mummy, you're out of, you're out of time. Katie, that sometimes the sign is blurry. Yeah. If you could kind of, kind of find the distance that works as you're holding up the sign. Okay, Mr. Stahl, or do you need me to repeat the, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Ray, I didn't mean to skip over you, Mr. Ray. Do you need me to repeat the question? Are you good? Oh, unmute yourself. There we go.
Yes, please repeat the question, and I'm sorry about that. Me and the mute button going-
What strengths do you bring to the table that will make you an asset to the North Charleston City Council?
The strengths that I bring to the table are leadership, teamwork, and I'm in the business of people. I believe that right now, we need, there's a call for unity, not just in our community, not just in our district, but in our city. I believe there's a call for leadership as well, strong leadership. My background, being a veteran, I'm a combat veteran. I've led several missions successfully into combat. With that being said, I am excited about a new mission, and that mission is serving my city, serving my community. How do I plan on doing that? By impacting and empowering our youth and by securing and safety, safeguarding our elderly. I believe that in our district, the major concern is establishing a, a plan to safely evacuate our elderly in the times of emergency. I also feel that in our district, this is a time for unity. I applaud all the work that has gone forth, and because of it, I believe the time is now for us to unify each other, and that's what I bring. Strong leadership skills, teamwork, and a unified attitude.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, Mr. Stahl.
Thank you very much. Well, I think I mentioned earlier that I worked with Charleston County Public Works for 20 years, and I understand how government works, and I understand what needs to get, things need to be done, how it gets done. I'm a can-do person. I'm not a thinker. I'm a doer. And because of all the senior management positions I've been in, that I feel like that I can bring to the table on, look at things and say, why not, and get things done. And unfortunately, city council in North Charleston more or less thinks it's just a district thing. But for instance, we have the big drainage problem on Crossroad Drive. We've been pushing that for 15 years, and we finally, after maybe meeting with them last week, we're gonna finally get something done. But citizens of North Charleston and residents of North Charleston are customers, and we need to get a good customer service program going within the city so that no matter who you are, whatever needs you have, your request can be honored in a timely manner.
Okay, were you finished? You kind of, you kind of cut out there at the end. Were you done, Mr. Stahl? Okay. All right, Mr. Baker, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
No. I, my strengths come basically from, I was a submarine veteran, and one thing that was paramount on the submarine is teamwork. In fact, if teamwork wasn't part of your makeup, you didn't stay on that submarine. It was imperative that you worked as a team. I believe that thoroughly. It's obvious in how I conduct business with my, my fellow officers in the Civic Association for Deer Park. We've had to go to City Hall just under 20 times in seven years because of rezoning requests that would have greatly affected the livability of people that's been here for years. And every time, without bragging, we've been successful to block unwanted rezoning requests. Okay? Secondly, I'm good with working with the city on things and also with the county. I was instrumental in putting together the property acquisition for the Shared Youth Path with Gospel Light Baptist Church, and also instrumental in getting property where they could rent it to them so they could store their equipment, so it isn't on the side of the highway and endangering people's lives on the back of Gospel Light Baptist Church's back property. I've worked well with others. I firmly believe that our livability and our infrastructure is in dire need of help. We have some streets in Deer Park, Otrano and Deerwood, better known as Suicide Corner, where SCDOT-owned street put in eight-foot-deep ditches, and for some reason can't see the need for guardrails around that ditch or the one in Otrano.
Mr. Baker, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to cut you out. Okay. All right, since that question was about each individual's strengths, I'm going to assume nobody has a rebuttal to somebody else's strengths. Does it? Nobody has a rebuttal, right? Okay. All right, let's move on to question two. And Mr. Moses will start us off on this one. The question is, what are your top three concerns for District Three? Keep in mind, you only have 90 seconds. I know that's a big question.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, my top three concerns with District Three is, I want to make sure that jobs are available, more jobs that are available in District Three. More jobs available to everyone who wants to be self-sufficient, independent, not just more jobs, but better jobs. Number two, standing up for gentrification by making more truly affordable housing available and but putting resources toward protecting the homeowners of District Three and existing residents. Number three, giving our kids youth programs that are safe, nurturing, and developing minds and character as alternatives to the, to luring against temptation in the streets, self-harm and crime. And you know what? I got, I got another one I want to add, since I got a little more time. Making our neighborhoods safer. In 2023 alone, in the city of North Charleston, it has been 1,145 violent and nonviolent crimes. We need to do better with that, and when I win this District Three seat, I will definitely form a better relationship with, with, with the North Charleston Police Station and the codes officers in District Three to make sure these efforts come true. It's time, because like I said before, new ideas for new North Charleston, and that's what I will bring, and that's my three, top four issues in North, in, in District Three.
All right, thank you. Ms. Mummy, what are your top three concerns for District Three?
First and foremost is infrastructure. If you don't provide proper infrastructure for an older district and older community, you're going to lose your livability. We have had our park not updated in 50 years. We have ponds that are flooding because they've allowed permitting in building encircling my community, so the ponds can't handle the water and the runoff, so we have road flooding because of it. We have roads that are not maintained well. We do not have appropriate stop signs, well, any kind of signage or speed humps in areas that we need them. So that, that's all infrastructure spending, and that also goes to the equity. We changed district lines based on the guise of equal votes, equal voice. That means equal funding in the end. If you don't provide equal funding by districts, you don't have a balanced community, and you create poverty zones by not funding certain areas properly. Thirdly, transparency. The city of North Charleston is not very transparent about how they spend money and how they make decisions. It's a matter of going to city council meetings and then getting partial information or gaslight kind of answers to things and not getting a true, sound report on things. I take my three minutes at the end of the meetings, as I have seen Mr. Baker and some of the other gentlemen do, trying to bring complaints and concerns for our communities to the table. And if it's not something the city council or the mayor wants to address, it gets shuffled. So those are my primary.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off as you were summing up.
Quite all right.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Ray, what are your top three concerns for District Three?
So my top three concerns is actually what I want to do for our district. Safety, impact, and improve. Safety, I want to secure our civilians. I want to make sure that our neighbors are safe. How do we do that? Through unity. I want to build up a camaraderie in our community. I want to bring back festivals. I want to bring back entertainment. I want the community to buy into the community. What happens when we self-generate our own resources to take care of our kids? I want to impact. How do I want to impact? I want to impact our education. Right now, A.C. Cochrane is not a high-performance school. So I'm not even focused on the school. What about the community center? What about exterior education for our kids? I also want to improve the great work that y'all individuals have done, Councilman Jamison have done. I want to improve on what y'all already done, and I want to, I want to get everything done. And when I say everything, I mean everything. A lot of our concerns have been pushed to the wayside. I believe that I'm a big man with a big voice, and I can make a big impact in our community. And that's why I will be our next district councilman. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stahl, what are your top three concerns for District Three?
The biggest three for me is, and probably the number one issue, is the crime. Crime has, we have to lower the crime rate in the city of North Charleston. And like I say, I'm president of Northwood Village Homeowners Association, and for years, we tried to get the city to help us maintain some sort of preventive measures within the community. And only after they wouldn't do that, did we install the 16 security cameras and the license plate reader camera, so we would, we put, we stopped 99% of the crime in our district, in our community. And, but this is like, you know, they, sometimes I don't think they care. I don't think they care about individual communities, and we have to do it ourselves, which is not what it's supposed to be. The government is supposed to be for us, and we are all customers, like I said earlier. And so we put a stop to it, and unfortunately, one of the people that we caught in our cameras is a young man that got shot and killed a couple of years ago right near our community, because he was- a couple of years ago right near our community because he would, he would have been one of the ones that we had had videos of and everything. So we, we have to stop the crime and the rest of it we can do. The drainage issue has been a big issue for us for fifteen years. Because of crossroads flooding there by our properties cost our association over twenty-three thousand dollars because they would not make the necessary improvements. And so until the city of North Charleston adopts the approach that everybody's a customer and start dealing with it regardless of what district you in, we all, you know, we all have to stand up and and make a point to them that it's not just about one person. It's about every citizen in the city of North Charleston.
Okay, Mr. Stahl, I'm gonna have to cut you off there. All right, thank you. Um Mr. Baker, what are your top three concerns for District Three?
Again, my top three concerns are infrastructure, livability and safety. One of the big things with safety is our children. And well, I know in Deer Park, they have no waiting area for school buses. They're sitting on the side of the road, waiting for their school bus, and one hundred percent of them are either on a tablet or their phones, not paying any attention. We have a texting driving speeding problem, okay? We have a road that's state-owned. It's in a, in a neighborhood, it's supposed to be twenty-five miles an hour everywhere. And they put a passing zone on Salamander Road. That's a strong safety issue, especially right in front of a tick, uh mobile home community. Okay, uh livability. Uh I want to institute, well, as far as safety and help with crime, I want to institute a know your neighbor program. Know your neighbor by first name on the left side of your house, know your neighbor on the right side and the one across the street. It would make a world of difference to say hi in the morning or when someone comes home from work and end their day with a smile and a hi. It works wonders. It's something that we've started on a couple of streets and it's working great. Again, the community officer program was working great until the pandemic. People were looking forward to seeing our community officer at our meetings. In fact, Joe Jefo, he would speak instead of leaving when he was done, which was on his night off, after he's off work, would stay for the whole meeting and get to talk to the people. And it got, and we seen where they were welcoming the police in the neighborhood instead of hiding in their face and running.
Okay, Mr. Baker, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to cut you off. Also, Mr. Baker, before we move on, I'm gonna ask you to try to adjust your camera. Half of your face is
Oh, I'm, I
Or adjust your, there you go.
I'm sorry.
All right, good. Okay, Ms. Jones, same question. What are your uh top three concerns for District Three?
Okay, so my top three concerns are um just having more resource for the older adults and seniors. Um, my mom was a senior citizen. She passed when she was eighty-seven, so my concern as a, as her caregiver was to make sure that she was safe and always had something to do. So I never want to forget about the older and older adults and senior citizens in the community. Also, safety for women, children and men. Um safety for, of course, my main thing is the road. And just like Mr. Baker said, like, it's horrible with the speeding. Um we have little children out there playing. Um the school bus stop situation is horrible. Um there's like really not a safe place for those kids to be. So I do agree, Mr. Baker, on that. Um this is working continuously, just keeping the neighborhood clean. Um, and just getting to know our neighbors. And I do agree again with Mr. Baker. I feel as though we become more of a neighborhood again, um gets to know each other. Uh I think that that makes the community more safer for District Three. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next question and Ms. Mommy will start us off on this one. This is a long question, so um you probably need me to repeat it. But uh North Charleston City Council elections are conducted every four years with all city council slots and the mayor's position up for election all at the same time. Other municipalities in the area conduct alternating city council elections where half of the council positions are on the ballot every two years and then the other half the following two years. Would you be in favor of North Charleston switching to this alternating system? Ms. Mommy?
Uh I think we're gonna end up in a situation like we are this year where we're gonna totally turn over the city council. And that leaves a lacking of experience um sometimes, so I can see that that could be a problem. Rotation would probably benefit the city in keeping some of the experience at the table that's familiar with where the city has been and where they're going. A lot of the planning and zoning is, and funding happened over multiple years. So this is gonna be an election term where we may see an entirely new group without having a whole lot of information on where the background is and some of the projects that are already underway. So I can see the benefit in splitting that up so that you don't have a total turnover. You also risk losing a lot of personnel when you do a total turnover because there are staff members that have been working for the city with the council people and the mayor. And when you do a turtle, total flip, they may not want to maintain their positions if they are in a environment that has changed that drastically. So I do see the benefit in separating the votes that we don't have this hundred percent turnover. It's a nonpartisan election. Um so there's really, I think, a good opportunity to split that up, even if we just did it every four years instead of every two years. I think rotation would be a good idea for our city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mr. Ray, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Uh yes, please.
Okay, so uh North Charleston City Council elections currently are conducted every four years with all the city council slots and the mayor's position all up for election at the same time. Other municipalities in the area conduct alternating city council elections where half of the council positions are on the ballot every two years and then the other half the following two years. Would you be in favor of North Charleston switching to an alternating system?
I honestly believe that a alternate system would be more effective. Um especially if we create a plan where we properly identify which, which what, what odd days or what odd years, uh which seats would be switched. That way we can ensure that agenda stays fresh and agenda stays new, but more importantly, we can stay on task. So yes, I would be in, be in favor of a split, a split uh system.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stahl, same question. Do you need me to go over it again?
Well, I think it'd be a great idea to do an alternating uh election, but I think the whole system needs to be reformed in North Charleston because that just stands now, you know, even in the last election, we elected a mayor who didn't even get fifty percent of the vote. And I'm, my mind is to believe that if you can't get fifty percent of the people to vote for you for mayor or city council, you probably shouldn't be in those positions because the majority of people didn't want you in that position. And I think that we need to change that, but then I think the alternating part would also work because you know, this year, whether you know it or not, but we have one person who's running for mayor and for city council. And that to me is that if you want to run for mayor, then our ordinance should not allow you to run for city council when the terms of both positions are concurrent. And so I have no problem with thinking, with agreeing about doing the alternating, but I think we need to reform the ordinance in North Charleston, period. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mr. Baker, same question.
I, um, I'm for changing to the alternating. Uh the main reason for that is we'll go back to the basics. I was trained very well in the military. And one thing you see there is senior people training on the job, the new people. And the best people to show you what's going on. You can read books, you can watch videos and all. But the best trainer is someone that's actually doing it. And then you do it, I do it. This is why. And explain the differences so that that person can form an opinion based not just that person's way, but hey, I see the way of doing it. This is the way it's supposed to be done. How come, you know, and then they can determine how to become a better person or a better leader by the examples they get. I'm all for the alternative program.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, Ms. Jones, same question.
I'm all for the alternative, um, you know, for city council or mayor. Um just because I believe that it promotes a great deal of transparency. Um that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Moses, same question. Nope, unmute, unmute.
Sorry about that again. Um I am, my position on this, I'm uh against the alternating. Um and and I, and I'm gonna tell you why. Um, when I was serving uh on the Charleston County Housing and Redevelopment, Redevelopment Authority for five years, um it takes time to, 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 to fix issues. It takes time to gather all the information from the community. It takes time to push issues um a- across and get other, um to get other elected officials in this and, and, and lobby together, right? So if we're gonna come in, to come in our positions together, I believe that we should stay together. And, 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 and again, I'm against the al- alternating, right? Um it's, it's, it, and again, I'm repeating myself. It takes time. Um we, we can't split up people um and two people, you know, got a good, District One and District Two got a good relationship with District Four and Five, and next thing you know, it's an alternating year and you've lost all the camaraderie, all the healthy relationships building with all the city councilmen. So I'm totally against that and I'm a, I'm a firm believer of if it's not broke, don't try to fix it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have a rebuttal to that question? No, okay. All right, let's move on. So along the same lines, and several of you have alluded to this. With all ten city council positions up for election this year and many council members as well as the mayor uh not running again, the city leadership is set to be mostly new people. There's a possibility it could even be all, all new people. If you are elected, what strategies are you planning to employ to learn how the city operates, given the fact that much of the corporate knowledge will be gone? And with this one, we will start with Mr. Ray.
What strategies would I, I employ? I will still reach out and, and rely on the strength of my community, of my district and the experience that went before me. Um I, I do agree with my constituent that the best experience is the wisdom from people that came before you. So the strategy will be simple. Um as we work together to create a newer North Charleston, as we work together to bring the resources in our district, as we worked it together to impact and improve our education, we'll always be forever learning and, and craving knowledge and wisdom from our, from the constituents or from the members that went before us. Um so we would definitely have an advisory group. Uh we will be plying, we will be plying on our leaders, our community leaders. Um but again, this only works when we work together. This only works when we're in the business of people and serving each other. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh Mr. Stahl, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, I got it. Uh the thing about it is I think working for Charleston County for over twenty years, I have a pretty good idea of how, how the city government would work. Also, from standpoint, because I did a lot of coordination with a lot of people within the city of North Charleston and some of my friends still work for the city of North Charleston. So I, I think what has to come about is listening to everybody else and like Mr. Baker talking about, you know, the streets and the roads and all the different things. Somewhere within this new government with the city, hopefully there are going to be people who want to listen on the big picture, on what is best for the entire community. And hopefully the new council members will look at it that way, instead of being parochial, thinking I'm only concerned about my district. We can be concerned about District Three, but we also, there's things within the city that are a citywide problem. Not just necessarily, I mean, like we have the big drainage problem on Cross Road Drive, but that's a big problem citywide. So you have to bring together the people who look at it as what we all can do to improve the entire city and make sure each district gets equitable treatment. Like what happened in Pepper Hill never should have happened. Because when I was with Charleston County, I was over on the drainage and we cleaned all the canals in North Charleston. And because of them not looking ahead when they planned that project over on Popper Dam and all, they ended up with a major flood. So we need to bring everybody together who's looking toward the big picture, not just one small part of the, uh city.
Okay, thank you very much. Um all right, Mr. Baker, same question. Do you need me to go over it again? Okay, uh unmute yourself, please.
The thing we need to look at is look at who has had proven success. Look at what they did and then find out who has done work in the city that is reliable and dependable. Look at the job, review what is need to, needs to be done and then make decisions as a team. Pull your resources, not just one person suggesting something and everybody else nodding their head like a bunch of little dolls at the fair, okay? Hey, let's research it. Let's find out who's done this already, okay? Chief Burgess was a good example of that. He went to another city to find out how a program worked. And he walked the streets with their officers and then brought it back. He didn't listen to, hey, this works, that works. He went and did it. That's the type of leadership that makes things happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh Ms. Jones, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, let me find the question, okay. Um with all ten city council positions up for election this year and many council members as well as the mayor not running again, the city leadership is set to be mostly new people, possibly even all new people. If you are elected, what strategies are you planning to employ to learn how the city operates, given the fact that much of the corporate knowledge will be gone?
Oh yes, most definitely, um just doing research. Um just not being a copycat or just sitting there and just, you know, letting, you know, things that went on in the past, like, you know, just lager. Um so most definitely um putting our heads together. Uh there is a group of younger um candidates that is running uh for a city council that this year, which is amazing. Um so promoting that aggressive leadership um, um to make in North Charleston better. So with that, we working together, aggressive leadership and just changing North Charleston for the better for everyone.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh Mr. Moses, same question.
Yes, um so what I would do, um some of the strategies that I would use is, first thing first, uh one, I believe one of the most important things um that uh God, the Creator, or whoever you want to refer him to, a higher power gave us was the ability to look at history, to look at things and look at thing, look at history and see what worked and what didn't work. That's number one. Number two, um when I worked, um when I was on the Charleston County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, when I was chairman, I made sure that all my board members went out and, and we went out and got, uh we went to retreat every year to make sure that we are on the same page with our responsibilities as, as commissioners. And I would do the same thing with, with, when I win this seat of, of District Three seat. I want to make sure and put on the table that councilmen, that we councilmen and councilwomen, that we go out and get yearly training um every year so we can fight against mission creeping, right? Um that's, and number three, I would want to, in the Bible it says, it talks about the youth. It talks about the youth um leaning on the, 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 the older people for counsel, the older leadership. So I would definitely reach out to um uh of all the local, um of, of the local elected officials that has had these positions in the past with, from Charleston County Council to the city of, of Charleston, of, of the city council for the city of Charleston. Um also, I want to say one more thing. Also, I have wonderful relationships with state, state um elected officials um as well. So it's all about, we just gotta stand together, band together on the one unit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Mummy, same question. Do you need me to repeat it? So unmute, yeah.
Repeat it for me.
With all ten city council positions up for election this year and many council members as well as the mayor not running for reelection, the city leadership is set to be mostly new people, possibly even all new people. If you are elected, what strategies are you planning to employ to learn how the city operates, given the fact that much of the corporate knowledge will be gone?
This year, I think particularly, we need a fairly drastic change. We've had thirty years of very strong leadership by Mayor Summy and some of the council members that have been on council for a very long time. Uh, I think it's time we have a free, pretty significant turnover. As I said in my opening, there's been a whole lot of good old boy system running the city of North Charleston for a very long time. So I really think having a new group this time will make a big difference in being able to look at things with fresh eyes and a fresh perspective. I I do think we all, all of the people that have spoken have some background with civics and understand basic government function. We do have some significant staff, members that have been on staff at the city for many, many years. We have twenty-plus-year employees that work in planning and zoning and other departments in the city that can help with some of those turnover things that are gonna be in question. We also, as elected officials, have the responsibility of making sure we're aware of what's going on now before we're elected and how those things need to continue to move forward for the programs that have already been put in place and where we want to go from there. So it is our responsibility to get up to date and and be well-informed personally on what the expectations are for the role of city council persons and then move forward as a group, as a new group, making decisions and plans for our city in a more functional and balanced fashion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next question. Uh, and when I'm, when I'm done reading it, Mr. Stahl, you will start us off. Um, two months ago, North Charleston City Council approved a pay raise for the city's police officers. Do you agree with this measure as a way to recruit police officers? And do you think it will have an impact on crime in the city? What other measures do you think city council could take to reduce crime?
I agree with any police officer who is going to get a salary increase because they are the frontline. They are the ones that keep us safe twenty-four seven. I think that we need to, you know, do everything we can to support them as as a city council. And I think that we need to assist them and trying to figure out why do we have all this crime? I think we need to look at, it bothers me as a longtime resident of North Charleston as to see young black men shoot each other or or any young person shoot each other. There's some reason why this is going on. So we need to give them all the necessary tools to protect us, which would be surveillance cameras, license plate readers. But we also need to do something about community outreach to try to solve the problem as to why we are the life. And until, even though the salaries are good, the police officers are are great people, we still have to go to where the problem is in North Charleston. And we got to try to figure out how we can do something to reduce crime by reaching out, like I said a minute ago, to community leaders and people who are interested in trying to solve the problem, not just get up in front of a microphone and talk about it. And so it's a question, identify the problem and solve it, just don't talk about it. And so that would be my view.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Baker, same question regarding the police. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, I'm I'm good. Um, one, is they're working on a non-invasive uh camera uh program right now as they're implementing it around the city, which gives, it cuts the uh time in half for the officers to get to locations because they're informed. Okay, a well-informed person makes much better and more accurate decisions than when it isn't, okay? And seeing something firsthand uh going on answers a lot of questions and keeps that police officers on the on the site time a lot less than it would be where he has to go and question everybody, okay? Secondly, where their ultimate train, where they have to go up to Columbia, let's eliminate where they have to get their final training at Columbia and start bringing it local so it doesn't take close to a year to train an officer, okay? And that's that's, that would improve and then, of course, implementing the Know Your Neighbor program, okay? Which is working. Uh, that's, that's about all I can say on that right now. You know, but the big thing is support your police department, okay?
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Ms. Jones, same question. Do you want me to read it again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, two months ago, North Charleston City Council approved a pay raise for the city's police officers. Do you agree with this measure as a way to recruit police officers? And do you think it will have an impact on crime in the city? What other measures do you think city council could take to reduce crime?
Okay, so as I said in that very meeting when they gave those raises, um, I just have one concern. Um, I'm for the raise, but my concern is with that raise, um, are we still going to continue to build relationship with the community? Uh, with the black community, uh, with the Caucasian community, with everyone? Um, so that, um, again, it can be safe, that we cannot stop crime. We can minimize it, um, but with that raise, do we give the officers, you know, more time or our office, officers want to be put placed in certain communicate communities to be transparent, to build relationship with uh the community, neighbors, children, um, businesses, um, so that everyone can come together. Um, what, as far as crime, oh, maybe, you know, it would, you know, allow more officers to apply um to be officers for North Charleston uh Police Department so that we can have additional patrols on the street. But that's, that's about it, you know, and I'm I'm all for raises. Um, I believe that only the lower um rank uh police officers got raises and the higher rank didn't get raises. I felt that everyone should have gotten raises and not just a certain level of officers.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, Mr. Moses, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I I have it from here. Um, I'm one, I one thousand percent believe in uh giving our policemen a raise. I I I totally support the raise. Um, I I'm I'm a firm believer, um, every place I ever worked, if you give somebody a raise, they do their job better. If you give someone a raise, they do their job better. So I one thousand percent support that. And also, I believe, um, as 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 councilman, uh, as the District Three, the next District Three Councilman, I'm gonna make sure that I put on a table and raise it again that we create a community engagement division. This division, their whole sole purpose is to always periodically, quarterly, go out into community, knock on doors, canvass, and really touch the people in the community and bring everybody together. Um, the problem I see, what we have, um, when things going good, we're not proactive. So even when things going good, we kind of need the, in a subliminal way, we need to act like it's an emergency and we need to get out there and knock on doors, canvass, talk to the people, go to the elementary schools. Um, and and I don't know, maybe sometime to uh go to elementary schools and really engage all the kids. Don't start trying to um advocate for for, you know, the policeman, we're good guys. When you went to the middle school and the high school, let's start in the community, go to the elementary schools and move on up.
I was muted again. Before we move on to Ms. Mummy, if you would give me just a minute, um, I need to plug in my laptop before it runs out of power. Hang on a second. All right, thank you. I'm sorry about that. Okay, uh, Ms. Mummy, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Um, yes, we have to, we have to maintain a good cost of living um and pay for our police officers if we expect them to do a good job. We need to provide them with appropriate training, um, and that's got to be continual training because the changes in our communities require changes in our police's capacity. They just need to be trained on a more regular basis to be up to date. I also think we need to look at mitigating crime, which means we take care of blighted buildings. We take care of blighted areas so that we don't have an increase in a population of homeless people living on the exchange at Inter- at at the fifty-two connector. It just puts a dangerous environment in place when we don't take care of those kind of things upfront. We need to start with education and getting police officers, I agree, into the elementary schools so that children are not afraid of police officers and they know that they're there to serve and protect them. We have, I think it was two years ago, the city put in place a program where they reached out to some community groups and provided them with funding in order to start programs to help with crime prevention and youth engagement. I think we need to make sure that those programs get funded again. So the community-based programs that have produced some good responses, some positive input can be funded again. I don't know what the city is doing to evaluate how effective those funds were spent by the different groups. I believe there were ten groups that were funded. Um, I know some of them have put on some very good projects in the city to help with engaging young people and preventing them from taking a bad path. So I think we really need to look at crime from all kinds of angles, what we need to do for our police and what we need to do in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Ray, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
Please, please.
Please, okay. I wasn't sure if you said please or police. Okay. Two months ago, North Charleston City Council approved a pay raise for the city's police officers. Do you agree with this measure as a way to recruit police officers? And do you think it will have an impact on crime in the city? What other measures do you think city council could take to reduce crime?
So to answer the question, I, congratulations, I agree with pay raise. Um, does it reduce crime? No. Um, what steps do we need to take? We need to identify the truth. The truth is low income means high crime. Non-equal education means high crime. North Charleston is a frontrunner for low education. North Charleston is a frontrunner for low-income housing. So when you talk about lowering crime rate, we have to address those issues. These have to be the forefront of our task force, period. Far as the police department, I'm all for the raise, but I am in agreement with Ms. Mummy. It's training, training, training. In the military, we had training. I'm, I have an aviation ordinance background. I've dealt with firearms since I was seventeen. It amazes me that in the military, we have quarterly training, annually training, semi-annually training, and that keeps you accountable. So I believe training the whole, our police department accountable, but also targeting our education system, targeting our economics to lower crime. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have a rebuttal to that question? Okay, let's move on to question six. And Mr. Baker, we're back at the top, you will start us off on this one. How, in your opinion, is gentrification affecting the minority community in North? I'm sorry, does someone have something to say? No, I thought, okay. How, in your opinion, is gentrification affecting the minority community in North Charleston? And if you uh think it is affecting it negatively, what ideas do you have to address this issue? Mr. Baker?
Well, the biggest thing when it comes to anything affecting anything in the community is knowledge, education, and the truth. Making sure that what is being promulgated is true. Make sure that there's education in a group that's hearing and go from there. Does it affect, it affects everything across the boards, okay? And the main thing is, we gotta pe- make people aware of what's right, what's wrong, what's true, what's false, and then guide them when they have questions. That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Jones, same question. Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes, ma'am.
How, in your opinion, is gentrification affecting the minority community in North Charleston? And if you think that's a negative impact, what ideas do you have to address this issue?
Um, it's affecting um the minority, um, just because the lack of resources in the community, um, the lack of education, um, the lack of knowledge on how to, um, you know, get different trades to be able to pay, you know, this high rent. Um, the cost of living has gone up, but, you know, the pay is still, the minimum wage is still low. I think it's at eight twenty-five an hour for the minimum wage. I see some companies are paying their employees like fourteen and fifteen dollars now, but that's not enough. That's the, that's not even close enough um to pay the rent. Um, there's that, these apartment complexes and some of these homes are being raised to. Um, it's just not adding up, so resource, education, and knowledge of how to, you know, improve yourself as an individual, um. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Moses, same question. Do you want me to repeat it? Oops, unmute.
Yes, ma'am, could you repeat that, please?
Yes. How, in your opinion, is gentrification affecting the minority community in North Charleston? And if that's a negative impact, what ideas do you have to address this issue?
Well, first of all, um, again, I one thousand percent uh uh agree that it is a negative impact on the minorities and the disenfranchised on people in the community. I call those type, the people that's in a situation like that, the lost, the least, the forgotten, and the walked over. And the fact of the matter is, um, gentrification, it increases rent. So you look at the members of District Three, for example. A lot of members, people that live in District Three, they can't really afford to pay their rent now. So if you have one person on the other, on on the right side of the highway that can't pay their rent and someone come in and renovate a a old home and 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 sell it for five hundred thousand dollars, again, that's gonna increase your rent. Now, while I was on of the Charleston County Housing Redevelopment Authority under my leadership, and it was my idea, we had eighteen demolition homes. What we did with those homes, we sold those homes to Charleston County Council, back to Charleston County Council for two point four seven million dollars. And those are the ways, you have to think of innovative ways to 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 uh reverse gentrification. But again, we gotta stop gentrification because, and also, it brings down the morale in the community and also it it raises the rent up for existing businesses that living in North Charleston. They can't afford to pay the rent at all as well. So we gotta make sure we protect the disenfranchised people in the community that's being affected by gentrification.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, Ms. Mummy, same question. Do you want me to repeat it? Oops, unmute.
We are having a problem with gentrification because we can look at what's happening in the city of Charleston. And whatever affects Charleston affects North Charleston. The development up and down the northern portion of the city of Charleston with high-rent condominiums and apartments is pushing people out of homes that they've lived in for generations. Those families are moving further north and that's into the lower portion of the city of North Charleston where rent and homeownership was more compatible with what they had in the city of Charleston. All of that pushing out is affecting property values throughout the city of North Charleston. We know we have a need for low-income housing. We need to spread that out among the entire city of North Charleston and not create blocks of low-income homes and homes and low-income housing and just close everybody off into a corner. That's the, not the most effective means of distributing low-income housing. We need to make sure the infrastructure is in place that we don't have housing developments that look like Gadsden Green in the city of Charleston. Um, we need to ensure that our low-income housing is safe and well-provided for so that these community members don't have food deserts where they have no grocery stores um, or lack of transportation to get out of the area they're in and back to wherever they're gonna work specifically downtown. We have a low country uh rapid transit system that's being proposed to be put in place, the plans are there. We need to make sure that that goes through and that provides safe pedestrian and cycle access to the bus route so the people moving out of the city of Charleston have a clear path to get to places that they are employed in the city.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Ray, same question, do you want me to repeat it?
No ma'am, I'm good. Thank you, um. I'm gonna keep it short. Affordable housing is how we fix gentrification. Uh, education reform is how we fix gentrification. Economic development is how we fix uh gentrification. We have to, we have to target North Charleston as a home with this development because as city council, we not only have to stop the cancer of gentrification, but we're still responsible for economic development, community development. So how do we do that? We have to educate the citizens of North Charleston. We have to give, we, we have to change the pay rate. We need more jobs, more affordable jobs so that they could afford the housing. We need affordable housing so they can live inside the city in which they desire to live in, this beautiful city we call North Charleston. So for me to fix the issue, we gotta address the real issues. The real issues that's on each one of our ballot, affordable housing, education reform, and economic development. We cannot stop gentrification and we cannot continue to develop our, our, our community and our city without addressing those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Stahl, same question, do you want me to repeat it?
No, I have it, thank you. Uh, well, I, I think this is, this is interesting, uh, you know, forum and and I've listened to each one before me and this is where I go back to the same issue. We have people in this forum who have great ideas, people who can come together and know how to make things better for everybody in North Charleston. So the question goes back to the thing I've been saying all along, is why, why do we not have a solution? Why do we have to, you know, we got great people in this forum. Why could they not have been heard by the city officials to address the issue? And this is where the city has gone wrong for several years. It's always been about doing different things, but never centering in on the primary function of city government. And what we're talking about now is the primary function. So, the election's over with and I suppose the great people on this forum, so what's gonna happen next? Are their voices gonna be heard no matter who gets elected? Where is the city in trying to help resolve the problems that normal citizens bring up? And this has been my biggest issue with the city government at this moment is because a lack of response in dealing with the big issues that pertain to a lot of areas in city, in this city. And hopefully, no matter what happens with city council races, that the good folks on this forum will make the voices known at city council meetings and the new mayor hopefully, and the new city council will have a better idea on how to serve the people in North Charleston. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we just have time for, um, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask if anyone had a rebuttal to that question, okay. Um, I think we just have time for one more question. And um, this one, Ms., Ms. Jones will start us off. Are there any individuals or groups who have endorsed your candidacy and who are they?
Yes, um, uh, one of the individual, individuals is Sean Wilson. Um, he is a lawyer. Um, his office is in the city of Charleston, with Catloon Street. Um, he is one of my biggest um endorsers, um. I also have a lot of colleagues um that is running too for uh city council as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Moses?
Um, yes, um, um, Parker, Parker and Nelson Law Firm, um, and that's, they have two locations. One location here in um, um Charleston and another location in um Las Vegas. Um, the, the, the owner of there, Teddy Parker, um, he endorsed me and he was uh my former lawyer at the Charleston County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Um, I'm also waiting um day in and day out. Um, and I think we're real close as, at getting an endorsement from uh, from, from Congressman um Jim Clyburn. Um, I haven't got his endorsement yet, but I'm working hand in hand with his, with his, with his, um, his team, his campaign team to wait for his endorsement.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Mummy, same question? Oh, un, unmute.
I'm not looking for endorsements from companies or individuals. I am a door-to-door, meet the people that live in my neighborhood and my community and if you want me to represent you, then go out and vote. But I am not being funded or endorsed by anybody other than I going out and meeting the people in my community.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Ray, same question?
So, I'm endorsed by the Black One Hundred, uh, Black Hundred Men of Charleston. I'm also uh endorsed by physician Spit Care owner Dr. Kevin Ray. Um, they've been an advocate for me, we've uh spearheaded a lot of mentorship programs and we're just excited about the new development that we can make or the new opportunities we can make inside the city of North Charleston.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stahl, same question?
I haven't saw any endorsements, the only people that uh have asked me to get into the election were the people in the community.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baker, same question?
I uh, I mean, basically, I'm looking to the community to endorse me, not outside endorsements.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, I think that's probably about all the time we have for questions if we want to get our closing statements in. So, um, everyone is, uh, has sixty seconds to make a closing statement just sort of summing up your positions. Um, and we'll start off with Mr. Moses.
Thank you. Um, so, I believe that I'm the best candidate for uh this District Three Council seat. Um, again, um, I've worked in every, you can go, and matter of fact, e- everyone that's looking at this, you can go to sandinoMoses.com and you can look at my platform. Um, I've, for the last ten years, I've been on the ground, grassroots, working in the community. Um, like I said, in the middle of the pandemic, um, I was the only candidate in District Three that provided food giveaways. I was the only candidate in District Three that provided, um, administered um, um COVID vaccination events here. So I'm trained for this, um, I've been preparing for this for the last ten years and not just put my name on a ballot. So, so it's, it's all about the future and I have new ideas for a new North Charleston. I'mma keep, continue to fight, continue to advocate, continue to um canvas throughout my, um, throughout, when I win, throughout my, on my four-year term, and I'm the best man for the job.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Mummy, closing?
Yes, I um, really stand firm on the things I think need fixing in the city of North Charleston, specifically in my district, which is equal votes, equal voice should be equal funding. There needs to be transparency in our city government. Um, and we need to provide proper infrastructure for all the communities of the city of North Charleston, not specific areas that are special interests for city council or the mayor's office. I think that I can bring clarity to issues to the table, I believe in putting the facts out there and reviewing the data that we have in front of us and making decisions on what's in the best interest of the entire city. And I look to my community for supporting me in that endeavor and I have put out my name, my phone number, and my email address on cards that I've distributed in my community so that the people of District Three North Charleston can contact me personally and ask any questions that they have. Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ray, closing?
Thank you again for your time. Um, to the district, to District Three, I just wanna say, check my background. I'm a hard worker, I'm a team builder, I'm a strong leader, and that's what I offer, that's what I bring. Through my ice cream shop, I have two locations, one in Park Circle, one in Goose Creek. I've done so many community outreach. My heart is this city, I was born and raised in this city and I live to serve the city, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stahl, closing statement?
Uh, thank you very much and I've enjoyed listening to everybody in the forum, I think everybody has some great ideas. And then, myself, uh, native of North Charleston, long time, our high school, named after my granddaddy, which I'm very proud of. And after over thirty years' experience in government, working for uh Charleston County Public Works and being president of Northwest Villas Home Association for fifteen years, at which time we had to deal with the city on serious issues that goes back to the point that we have to bring the government back to the people, no matter what district it is, so the residents are all given equal opportunity to make a request, they are customers. And as such, they need to be, need to be treated with the highest regard, no matter what their request is. And hopefully, that's what I can bring to the city council and hopefully, we'll have a better future in city in North Charleston.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, closing statement?
Again, my, my three top priorities are infrastructure, livability, and safety. I have a proven track record, um, many times to city council when it came to re uh rezoning and saving the livability. Uh, we've been uh completely successful in that area, myself, my team. I work well with others, I work with city officials well, the police department, and I have a record that's stellar when it comes to working with others and a team player. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Jones, you have a closing statement?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Um, as a young professional, um, that who have served the community for over twenty years, um, I have served over ten thousand plus families during the course of those years, including the amenity and night. I'm also a, a, a advocate for battered women, men, and children. Um, I just previously did a news interview for Live Five News for domestic violence. Um, and I feel as though this is what, um, North Charleston, the city of North Charleston needs and District Three needs, um, strong and aggressive leadership. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you all. To the voters out there who may have been watching via live stream on YouTube or who may watch this recording later, thank you again for taking the time to hear from our candidates. We encourage you to study the issues carefully, learn about the positions of each candidate, and vote for the candidate of your choice on November seventh. Early voting will be available from October twenty-third to November fourth at the Charleston County Board of Elections Office in North Charleston. The Board of Elections phone number is eight four three eight four four eight six eight three. Many thanks to our city council candidates tonight. I'd also like to thank the other Charleston-area League of Women Voters volunteers for making this event happen. And I'd like to wish you all a good evening and thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Shayna, thank you Katie.
Very much.
Thank you all very much for responding to my emails.
You're welcome, very welcome.